Government Code Section 54956.8 regarding property located at 100 Avenida Presidio San Clemente, Assessor Parcel Number 690-012-01 and 690-012-02. City Negotiators is Andy Hall, City Manager, Negotiating Parties West Development Ventures, LLC, and under negotiations are price and terms. Also will be discussed the property at 1100 North El Camino Real, San Clemente Assessor Parcel Number 988-393-01 and 692-393-01. City Negotiator Andy Hall, City Manager, Negotiating Parties Novella Royale, and under negotiations are price and terms. And I should note that all council members are present. And Mayor, we do have one speaker for closed session. And this is on Item B1, the property located at 100 Avenida Presidio, and that's Amanda Q.
Presidio. I've had to come up and speak because the geotechnical study by LGC confirms what other geotechnical studies show. They confirm ancient landslides, and building on that land is a major problem. The main problem is that there is an ancient landslide that encompasses that part of town. And I know that study only surveyed 100 Avenida Presidio, but it's part of a greater ancient landslide, and that's something that is on the USGS webpage. And the geotechnical report references this, as well as previous studies show. The concern is that if there is any grading of that area, it could cause some movement to the surrounding hillside there. It's my understanding that local residents have sure been active years ago in opposition to any building in that area, and I sure wouldn't want any litigation as a result of that, any potential harm from that. When I was reading the budget, there was a capital improvement program for that site, 100 Avenida Presidio, the old city hall. And I reached out to city staff, and I was told that I was part of another project, and this person didn't know what that project was. And I hope that spending $100,000 for grading is not part of this closed session discussion agenda item, because I think that would be really wrong to do, spending $100,000. And once you start grading, what kind of land movement is going to happen in that area? So I'm really concerned about that, and other residents are concerned as well. Thank you for your time.
I'll move we go into closed session and reconvene here at 6:00 PM this evening.
...
See, he only shows up when he's getting a plaque. As the mayor pro tem, I may have to call this meeting to order.
Don't give him any ideas.
Yes. Councilmember Knoblock is making his way to the dais and I will announce we have our invocation led by Carolyn McOwen with San Clemente Presbyterian Church. Carolyn?
All right, let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this beautiful city that we have been blessed to live in. You have been in the midst of the very beginning of the founding of this city, this community, this Spanish village by the sea. And so, Lord, we come to you and we claim you as our King of kings and Lord of lords. And as you have dealt with your people with righteousness and justice, with mercy and love, that is our prayer, that these amazing council will be discussing issues, and may they do it the way you did it, with righteousness, justice, love and compassion. So bless them, Lord, multiply their time as they have given so much of their time for service for the city, for all the issues, for every person, all the work, the military, I could go on and on, Lord. So bless them tonight. May they have the wisdom of your Holy Spirit upon them as they make decisions for this evening. We pray this all in your precious name of Jesus. All God's people said, amen.
And I'd like to note that all council members are present. And first item on the agenda is a presentation of proclamation to Orange County Fire Authority Division Chief Mall proclaiming May through August 2024 is drowning prevention and awareness season and Orange County Fire Authority quarterly size up presentation will also be given at that time. Chief Mall?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I'll just get into the proclamation real quick. I really appreciate this opportunity, Mayor, city council and city staff for this opportunity. As you guys are very well aware, I do come for a few different proclamations to raise awareness throughout the year. But truly, the drowning proclamation, the drowning prevention proclamation is my favorite because it's near and dear to my heart. I spent a lot of time as a lifeguard prior to this job with Captain Malot in the back there. So as far as preventing drowning, obviously, it's very, very dear to my heart. Obviously, as you guys may know, drowning is the leading cause of death or for kids under five years old. We've all heard that phrase that drowning happens, that drowning, that children drown without a sound. That is really true. Unfortunately, throughout my career, I've been on many of these incidents, and they're traumatic and horrible for everybody who's there. And the one thing you never hear when you show up to these incidents is I sat there and watched the whole thing happen. It's typically, man, I turned away for just a second. I answered a text on my phone. I went inside to grab a drink, came back out and it happened. So it truly does happen that fast. And it's important that it's imperative that we all work together to prevent these kinds of drownings. Just some quick statistics for you. In 2023, in Orange County, there was 104 drowning incidents. Fifty-two of those were fatal and 50 were non-fatal. But as you know, the non-fatal obviously is still very dangerous for the victim and also just as traumatic for everybody that was at those incidents. Some stats just as San Clemente specific, last year in 2023, we did have five fatal drownings and two non-fatal drownings, unfortunately. But I'm very happy to say that in 2024, as at this point, we've had no drownings. So I implore you to work with me to make sure that we keep that going throughout the year of 2024, to keep the drownings at zero. We teach three simple things, ABCs of water safety. The number one is that A, which is active adult supervision, if you have pools, you're around pools, you're at parties, make sure that somebody is assigned to watch the water. Whenever I have parties at my house, I have a pool, it always ends up being me, probably because I just can't help myself but watch the water. But make sure somebody's always watching the water because it's not just the kids who don't know how to swim, it's the kids who fall in, hit their heads, do crazy things, that kind of things that happen. So make sure somebody's always watching the water. Barriers are key, whether it be the fences that go around the pools or the barriers on the doors that let you know when the little ones are making their way out the back door. Barriers are really, really important. We highly encourage those. They actually say that the fences prevent 83% of the drowning. So those fences work really well. One thing is if you have one of those fences and you're having people over, make sure that door to the fence is closed. I only say that because I've been on those incidents where unfortunately, people say, yeah, we had the fence, but we had people over, so we propped it open and a little one will sneak in there and it's horrible. So make sure you have the fences and they're closed up. And then classes, obviously, make sure, you know, the kids are all taking their swim classes, adults too, you guys can take swim classes, feel comfortable. We're obviously in a ocean community, right? We spend a lot of time in the water. So make sure you're confident, you know what you're doing in the water. And yeah, let's work together to make sure that 2024 stays with zero drownings.
Good record so far. There's a good article today's Orange County Register about this whole issue and the number of people in Orange County that have fallen victim to drowning. And those numbers are rather significant. They also mentioned, I think, one thing we forget about during COVID, a lot of people didn't take the swim lessons. And so we have a lot more people that just missed that opportunity. So we need to step that up.
Yeah, real quick, I'd like to say, Chief Christian, we should acknowledge a couple of his great deputy Gish and crime specialist Ryan Case, who actually received a life saving medal, a drowning case, which they actually revived the victim. So we have one less fatality because of the great actions by our OCSD.
Yeah, not only that, too, we were on that incident with them, obviously, and they not only jumped in, started saving that child, but also escorted us to the hospital, which was incredible, something you don't typically get, but they escorted us code three to the hospital and truly, you know, saved that kid's life. So it's pretty neat.
So I have a plaque for you on behalf of the city council. I don't know how many this is so far, but it's a lot. So on behalf of the city, and we won't bring everybody, well, we can if we want to, but we've done, we probably have a dozen of these photos with you. But on behalf of the city, I mean, this resolution expresses the same thing that you outlined in your in your report today, and we thank you for everything you're doing. And we'll come down there, we will take a picture, number next in line, and here you go.
Should I just go right into my next thing? And then, not that you haven't heard enough from me already, but you gave me a microphone and I like to talk. So I just wanted to take a minute to to highlight the the good work that our men and women of the Orange County Fire Authority are out there doing every single day. Every quarter, our agency puts out one of these called our quarterly size up. If you don't understand why they would call it that, a size up, when a first officer gets on scene of any kind of incident, they'll give radio traffic, letting everybody know what kind of incident they have and what impact it's going to have. So that's called a size up. So we put these quarterly size ups out every quarter. Wanted to show this. None of these incidents actually are San Clemente specific, but they are throughout the county, and this is a regional fire service model that you have here in Orange County. But these are all incidents that actually, since this video, we've had here in San Clemente, except for one, and I'll let you guess which one. But they're all incidents that we have had here in San Clemente, and incidents that our crews train for and prepare for every single day. So I just wanted to kind of show this video and then I'll share some San Clemente statistics, too.
Hi, I'm Captain Greg Bardet, and this is the OCFA quarterly size up. In this quarter size up, we see our fire water rescues in the same day. Take a look at our annual open house, which had record attendance, and see a valuable tool we have available to our residents. From heart attacks, hazmat and heavy rescue, to five car pileups, three alarm blazes and 50,000 acre wildfires, the OCFA is your all hazard fire department, and this is the quarterly size up. In the quarter covering February, March and April, your OCFA firefighters responded to 43,673 calls. Now, when we take a deeper dive into those calls for service, they break down as follows. We responded to 523 fires, 11,591 all hazard calls, such as traffic collisions, remote rescues, hazardous materials calls, and many others. And finally, 31,559 EMS calls. These calls were spread throughout the 23 cities and unincorporated areas of our service region, and all 78 stations were integral to our success. Now let's take a closer look at a few of those calls we responded to. On Thursday, February 1st, we performed not one but two swift water rescues in the city of Santa Ana. First, at seven in the morning, our swift water team utilized one of our rescue boats to save a man who was trapped under a bridge with water rushing by. Then, just a few hours later, at 12:55 in the afternoon, our OCFA helicopter rescued another man who was stranded on a small island in the Santa Ana riverbed. These were two unique rescues in close proximity to each other. On Monday, March 11th, at just after 5:00 PM, we were dispatched to rescue Nala, a 10-year-old horse who lost her footing and fell into a trench in Laguna Hills. Our technical rescue team worked with a vet to sedate the animal while simultaneously devising a plan to extract her. Once sedated, we carefully removed her from the trench. We're pleased to report, after being evaluated by the vet, Nala was given a clean bill of health. On Wednesday, March 17th, at 3:53 in the afternoon, firefighters were dispatched for remote medical aid in O'Neill Park. We received information that a man had fallen down a steep cliff attempting to rescue his pet bird, a parrot. When we found him, he was about 12 feet down the cliff with an additional 40-foot drop below him. In the ever precarious position, our helicopter team executed a flawless pick off the side of the cliff, rescuing the man and his bird, which he had tucked under his shirt. On Friday, March 22nd, at 7:30 in the morning, firefighters were dispatched to medical aid that was anything but routine in Buena Park. We were called by a trash truck operator who heard someone inside his truck after he had emptied a dumpster. As it turns out, a woman was asleep in the dumpster and was injured when the trash was emptied into the truck. Our team assessed and treated the patient, all while setting up to perform a high point rescue operation. We were able to safely rescue her and our firefighter paramedics transferred her to the hospital. On Tuesday, April 2nd, at 2:14 in the afternoon, our firefighters in Tustin battled a two-alarm blaze in an apartment building. When we arrived on scene, nearly the entire second floor was engulfed in flames. Crews began a rapid attack of the fire while also searching for victims. Fortunately, no one was inside the building. The swift action by firefighters contained the fire to the building of origin, preventing it from spreading to adjacent homes. Next up is a portion we like to call Community Corner. One of the best parts of being a firefighter is getting to interact with everyone in the cities we serve. In the last quarter, we were involved in nearly 400 scheduled community events. This doesn't even include the daily spur of the moment interactions occurring countless times each day throughout the county. Here are a few of the events we thought we would shed a little more light on. On March 16th, we held our annual open house. With demonstrations, informational booths, interactive activities, fire engines, and so much more, it was evident a great time was had by all. We love seeing all the smiling faces in attendance, and this year, we set a new record with 5,403 people who came by to partake in the fun-filled event. We look forward to seeing even more of you next year. Also in March, we had a unique opportunity for one of our firefighters to meet up with a man whose life he had saved over a decade ago. Captain McShane and the patient, Irma Lindo Monroe, had an emotional reunion, which was documented by NBC News. One other thing we're excited to share is our resident medical information form.
We are on our way. Medical aid, a woman, alert and responsive, having difficulty breathing. The captain briefing his crew with details from the 911 call. We arrive in less than four minutes after time of dispatch. Now it's up to the patient, if she's able, to provide information.
Medical history, medications, allergies, hospital preference, emergency contact information, all these pieces of information that we use to help treat a patient effectively and efficiently.
Captain Barda says the resident medical information form helps in these situations. Whether someone has dementia, a language barrier, is unconscious, or just scared, this form completed during a calmer time gives first responders what they need to care for you efficiently in a medical emergency. Anyone interested in completing a form can head to ocfa.org and go to the residents tab.
Well, that concludes this episode of the OCFA quarterly sizing. We wanted to end this by letting the Kulp family know they're forever in our thoughts and prayers. Captain Kulp passed away from job-related cancer on March 5th, surrounded by his family. On Saturday, April 20th, we as a fire family join the Kulp family to honor Captain Kulp's life and commitment to serve others. Thanks for joining us and we'll see you next quarter.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate that. Yeah, Rob Kulp lived right here in San Juan, did a lot of his life in San Clemente, Dana Point, San Juan area. So thank you, appreciate the opportunity to show that video and just remember him and the service that he did. Just wanted to go over a couple of quick statistics for San Clemente, just to give you a heads up on what's going on for the first quarter of the year. This year, this first quarter, the first three months of the year, we ran over 1,244 calls for medical aids. We ran 36 fire calls and 158 miscellaneous types of calls, which could be any from hazmat to remote rescues, which we get a lot out here in the in the dog park area for the mountain bikers, to malfunctioning appliances, just pretty much anything. So it's been a busy first quarter. As far as major incidents, fortunately, that first few months was somewhat slow. We did have a little vegetation fire right up here on La Pata in Del Rio, which was kind of surprising because everything was pretty wet, but the vegetation started to burn. But the crews were able to hold it at like an eighth of an acre and keep it from the homes, which were really nearby. So that was really good. Also, we had a working garage fire on Avenue of Salvador with flames impinging on the house next door, but the crews made a really aggressive attack on that fire and kept it from extending to the house next door and held it to the garage. So it was really good hard work by the crews there. A lot of public occasion and events that we've done. We did have a really good mock DUI, which some of you were at at San Clemente High School that first quarter. And our crews have also gone out and then performed over 1,200 fire safety inspections within the city. So it's a busy city. It's an honor to serve in this city. Most of the firefighters on your fire engines in this city live here. They love San Clemente. We actually had recently up in Toledo, one of our off-duty firefighters driving his kid to soccer, pull up on a working garage fire and put it out with a garden hose. So this is a firefighter hub here in San Clemente, and it's really a pleasure to serve. So I appreciate you giving me this opportunity, and I will be done now.
Presentation by Beaches Parks and Recreation Director Wiley concerning the Fourth of July Star Stripes and Slip and Slides event.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Samantha Wiley, Beaches Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here this evening to talk about a really new, exciting community event. There's a couple facets to this event and activity that I will start out with. I'll start by saying the event is formally called Star Stripes and Slip and Slides. This event is going to be replacing an unpermitted activity known as the office chair races that occurs in our downtown area. For many years, this event, the office chair races, has occurred without any proper permitting and proper street closures and all of the elements that the city would normally require. Over the years, we've seen the event grow in size, up to 7,000 people have attended that event. And in turn, the event has at times in turn, the event has at times become unsafe. Um, we've identified some, uh, pretty serious conditions that have occurred with OCFA response, OCD response. And in light of that, um, we've heard kind of an outcry from the neighbors and the residents that live in that area that they want their street back, in a sense. Um, so, uh, myself, along with all of the city departments, OCFA, OCD, we've collaborated to come up with an, an event that essentially supplants what the office chair races is, takes the elements of what the community has very much identified. And I think that's a really critical part when we look at, um, community services. What are they doing in that space? We know that water is fun. That's a really good activity. They want some kind of challenge, some kind of race. Um, all of those things are important. So, uh, my, my team in recreation has come up with a, a fun activity that should, um, do it big on the 4th of July, celebrate Independence Day, but give a much more safer and controlled environment to do that in. Um, so I'm gonna, if you can go to the next slide, Megan? This is our, um, event map. Um, this is going to take place exactly on Avenue de Rosa and Avenue de Victoria. It's kind of a fork, if you will, fork in the road. Um, and, and our event space will be from the, basically the 200 block of those two streets come together. Uh, in, in blue, that long, that large, long blue stripe, that is, the feature of the event is a 300-foot inflatable water slide. Um, the water slide will, uh, be for ages eight and over. You'd be 46 inches tall. We will have our pool lifeguards on site monitoring that space, and our aquatic staff have jumped in and put all the right precautions into place. Um, and then we also have for our younger kids, we've got in the green and the lower portion of the, on the map, on Rosa is kind of our kids' fun zone, our family zone. We've got a 75-foot obstacle course that you can run. We also have a 17-foot smaller slide, um, for younger kids ages two and older. Um, we are also running a whole bunch of different contests to kind of lighten up the mood. We're going to have water balloon contests using reusable water balloons. That's a big factor for us is managing our waste and our runoff. Um, we're going to be hosting a hula hoop contest. We've got whipped cream pie eating contests. Uh, we will also be doing a Papa Shop basketball tournament. Um, we are working with Camp Pendleton to bring in a military vehicle display, uh, which we feel is very apropos for this important celebration and this big day for our country and our community. Um, on top of all that, I want to point out that, um, security is a big factor for us. We want community events to be safe. We want our residents to feel like they have a safe space to be, both in their own homes and on the street in front of them. So we are hiring a security company that will help us with, um, regular security patrols. We'll be doing bag checks at the entrances to ensure that we aren't, don't have any outside alcohol being brought in, or water balloons, or unsafe devices that could, um, deter from the fun of this activity. We also will have extensive e-bike parking. We know e-bikes are important. We encourage it, but we want to make sure there's, there's space for it. So you'll see e-bike parking at every ingress and egress of the event venue. Um, we will have, uh, five food trucks on site as well. And then we'll also be hosting a, a beer garden as part of this event. Um, the beer garden is hosted by Los Malinos Brewery. We're happy to bring in Roman with Los Malinos to partner with us. And the Friends Foundation, the San Clemente Friends Foundation is going to be benefiting from, um, the, the proceeds of that event as well. On top of all that, uh, we will have two bands playing live music. Um, the first band is, is called Hillbilly Crutch. They are country and bluegrass, a very all-American. And then we will also have a local San Clemente band. Um, they're called Soul Kitchen, and they're a Doors cover band essentially. So we're very excited to make this kind of a hometown event. Um, and with that, I'm happy to take questions if there are any. I want to note that the event is free for admission. Anybody can come in. We encourage you to roam around, check it out. Um, all of the activities, there's a wristband that you can get to participate, and of course, food and beverage is a nominal fee. Um, our San Clemente residents will get the opportunity for pre-sale tickets at a discounted rate, and we are also offering the resident rate to any military families in the community as well, as we again want to, um, really shine that light, that this is an important event for our, those families as well. Happy to take questions.
We may have, I, I think we will have a few questions, but let's see first if we have any public comments.
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, well then we'll take questions. Let me see my list here. I don't have a list of anybody.
I requested.
Okay. I don't see a list. Lefler, okay.
Two, two quick questions. So, uh, are we using the same security company that we use for the carnival and the Cinco? Or is that, is that company?
No, this is a different security company. They actually do higher-profile athletic events. Um, they're working with the Chamber of Commerce on the Fiesta as well.
Okay. And, and could you explain the frozen t-shirt contest?
I can, yes. Uh, so you, I don't want to spoil it because I want you to come do it at the event, but I will tell you, uh, you freeze a t-shirt in a block of ice, and then you get a team together, and you have to chip away at that ice, and the first person or group to free that t-shirt and put it on wins.
All right.
Very self-explanatory. That's good.
Mark?
Yes, just, could you explain parking a little bit and how, so you mentioned the bikes being able to get there. Uh, what, what's your expectation of how people can arrive and, and participate in this?
So parking's always a challenge on July 4th. I, I don't know that we're ever going to, um, find a really good way around that. Uh, the, the trolley's a super important part of the 4th of July. Even if we did nothing like this downtown, um, the trolley runs in and out all day long. It goes until 11:00 PM that night. Um, this, this street will be no parking, and we're going to afford the residents that live in this street the opportunity to park at the community center. Again, we want to lessen the impact on them because we understand that we're taking over in front of their space. Um, e-bike parking is important. That's another piece, and we know that a lot of folks will come through, come in golf carts as well. Um, we are not running any other, uh, any other shuttle service. It's trolley-focused and trolley-centric. There is a detour on the trolley that kind of routes over in this area as well during the event.
And is there community support from the people living on these streets? Have they been generally excited about this? Are they apprehensive? What, what's your thought on that?
Yeah, I had the opportunity actually to meet with City Manager Hall and as well as Community Development Director Atamian, and we met with a group of folks who live in this area, um, that they really were, some of them started the, the event, and now they're admitting to, this has been, it's, it's overgrown us. Um, it's become an unsafe space. Uh, so those residents are on board for this. They understand that the easiest approach and the safest approach to manage an existing event is to do something in its place with the hopes that we're still going to draw the crowd that wants to be there, but we'll have the right safety dials in place that, uh, protects the city a little bit further, as well as the homeowners and the residents that live on that street. We are holding a neighborhood meeting with that group as well. There'll be a mailer going out this week, and then we're also going to do another, a larger 300-foot mailing notice within this area as well. Um, we want community feedback. We want to hear from the neighbors. Uh, and that's, that's one of the components of this, is there'll be a staff member on site that is that point of contact. They will have that staff member's cell phone that if something's going on in, in front of their house, we want to respond. That's the point of staff being there with security as well.
And last, really important question. Have you determined what type of pie it's going to be that you're eating?
Whip cream, I know that. It's the easiest, simplest thing to do.
Okay. Not, not apple?
No. I can take requests.
All right. Let, let, let me ask a couple of questions. I'll see, I, I don't have the list here, but, uh, is there others on, on our list that, it's not showing up on my screen?
I just saw Councilmember Lefler and
Okay, I'll, I'll speak then. Uh, uh, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that, uh, I've got a few public comments that, that sort of suggest that it's the city, uh, that is directing this, and, you know, I don't think that's the case. I mean, we, it, it, we, we are substituting an event, but I, my understanding, and this is what I want to get to, uh, that this was the community asking the city to do something. So maybe you or Andy can speak to that issue, because I don't want, uh, the general public to believe that we're telling them they can't do it, that we're going to do our own thing, but rather, they're asking us to do something.
Yeah, the, the neighbors, um, that live on Rosa and Victoria reached out, actually, to the city manager's office pretty much right after the 4th of July last year, asking for help, um, help to manage the situation, whatever that looked like, that it had become, um, out of control. Uh, fire was not able to respond to incidences without being hit by water balloons. And that, on the city's side, safety is our number-one concern. We want to make sure that every resident feels safe enough to go out in front of their house on any day, particularly the 4th of July. Uh, so they asked the city to step in and help, uh, support some kind of, um, change in the activity or shut it down. Our approach is, again, from a community services perspective, people want to do something. We want to, we want to help that. That's, that's the goal of, of community, is providing and perpetuating safe spaces to play and recreate in, and this accomplishes that. Um, that's not to say, you know, office chair races could exist, absolutely. Um, they, those folks that want to do that need to go through the proper permitting process, and that's through the special event permit process. So it's not a no, but they would need to abide by the, the permit, um, the municipal code section.
Andy, could you answer that question? Because I, I, I hear, you know, water balloons, and people say, well, water balloons is not a bad deal. Is it, I mean, what is the community, I mean, that are asked, asked us to intervene? What, what were they saying? Just water balloons? Or?
No, it was, it was more than water balloons. So certainly water balloons was one of the concerns, because they, the people throwing water balloons decided to, to change that up a little bit, and instead of having water balloons, we started having some frozen water balloons, and we had sustained some pretty serious injuries. Um, we have pictures of people that had been hit in the face, been bruised up in the face, some stitches, and a few things like that. There were also, unfortunately, because this was not a city-sanctioned event, we didn't have any facilities out there, and so there was no place to go to the restroom. A lot of them reported having people, you know, both having feces and urine in their yards, um, after the event. There was one lady that, uh, actually someone came into their, came into her home and demanded to use her restroom. Um, it wasn't, he may have been a bit inebriated, but it, but it did happen. So they did approach us and said, this, this was a great community event for a long time. It has simply outgrown our ability to, to have it on this street. It's a very narrow street. It's a residential area. Uh, last year, we, we used our artificial intelligence that I think the council is aware of. There were 7,000 people that attended that event. It's just a little more than that area can handle, especially without any restroom facilities, without any kind of, of, um, what?
Security.
The security or any kind of, of agenda of when it would begin, when it would end. Uh, the residents also were left with picking up the, the balloons, the after-site. There was, they spent hours and hours and hours, and we still, for days and days, had water balloons that were washing out of our storm drainage onto the beach and into the ocean. So it just became an event that was a little larger than, than could be handled organically. It needed to be something that is, that has a little bit more structure to it so that it could be safe.
All right, thank you. Yes, yeah. Yeah, for, uh, Chief Christian, are, are you going to have any deputies, like designated to this particular area, or is it going to be like the standard 4th of July deployment in the city? Thank you.
All right. Uh, appearing, no other questions, uh, I will. Thank you for your report, and we'll move on to the next item.
Next item on the agenda is Councilmember reports.
All right. You're going to have to help me, clerk. Madam Clerk?
Pardon me?
You're going to have to help me with the list, because the, the, oh, there, it's showing up this time. Okay. But there's anybody, I'll, I'll start with the report, uh, because I have a whole bunch of things, uh, over the past couple of weeks. And some of my colleagues joined me on some of these, but the first thing I wanted, wanted to mention is, we had, uh, an extraordinary event this past Sunday evening for Joseph Alexander, one of the oldest-living survivors of the Holocaust. We, uh, he, we heard his story about the struggle for survival in some of the darkest days of recent history. It was truly inspiring. It was put on by the, the Jewish-American community at our, uh, community center this past Sunday. Uh, yesterday, I had the privilege of attending opening day of the San Clemente Boys and Girls, uh, Club. Met with many of the young children at that event, the first day of summer camp. Watching the expression on these young children at their first day of summer camp was amazing, and I, I, I see that our money going to the Boys and Girls Club is being put to good use, and that the children are deriving a great benefit this, from that. This past Friday, and my colleagues, uh, joined me on this, we had the city of San Clemente, uh, ribbon-cutting of the, 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 the beach to celebrate the completion of the first half of our federal sand replenishment project for 2024. Senator Levin, uh, who spearheaded the federal effort and, uh, spearheaded the, almost $10 million of federal comp, uh, federal contribution to this effort was present. Assemblyman, uh, Lori Davies, who spearheaded the, the state effort and their almost $5 million contributions to our sand replenishment effort was also in attendance, as, as were my colleagues, uh, on the San Clemente City Council. This past Thursday, I had the honor of passing out diplomas at the 2024 San Clemente High School commencement, uh, celebration. Got to meet some, meet some of Mark's, uh, students. Uh, again, seeing our, our, our city moving, uh, on to the next champ, chapter. Seeing many of these young people moving on to the next chapter was, was inspirational. The city hosted, uh, two listening sessions, one, uh, last week where residents were, were able to come to a public meeting, voice their concerns about what the OCTA is going to do, uh, with the sand distribution and their, their money. Uh, the city council individually also met at a luncheon with, uh, the OCTA and discussed our concerns about how, how we, uh, move with the OCTA's, uh, remediation funds and what's going to happen, uh, with those funds. And I think we're moving in the right direction there. Was also honored to attend a Downtown Business Association meeting last week and discuss with their president, uh, better collaboration with our city. Uh, I was, uh, delighted to attend and offer the welcoming remarks to the Polynesian Festival last week, sponsored by the San Clemente Hawaii Surf Club. It was a spectacular event. Hawaiian music, Hawaiian dance, entire community out there at, at the park. If you haven't had a chance to go to that event, next year is probably a, a good time. Uh, I was also happy to attend, uh, the city hosted, and my colleagues were there too, a public budget workshop at the community center that allowed residents of this community to meet with all the senior department leaders and heads, ask any questions they want about this budget, interact with them. We had fire department, police, marine services, services there with their equipment, uh, doing demonstrations. So all that, uh, in anticipation of this budget meeting, giving every citizen of this, uh, community the opportunity to talk individually with anybody in our city about their concerns, uh, uh, and answer their questions about our budget. Contemporaneously with that, we had the Human Affairs Committee hosting a community resources fair inside the community center. Uh, our city does an extraordinary, uh, uh, event that, uh, gathers all the resources of this county that serve homeless, uh, people that, uh, need services for the county for mental health, other services. Uh, they were all there at our community, uh, event, and they were, we were allowed to, uh, ask questions, get information, all the information that, that you need, and that my colleagues, uh, were also there and, uh, participated and shared in that information. On Memorial Day, uh, there was two extraordinary events here at San Clemente. Uh, one of them hosted, uh, by, uh, the, the, at Semprified by the Marine, Heritage Foundation. And there we heard inspiring words of General Robert Wheeler. Uh, again, that's one of the, the nicer events that happens to honor our fallen heroes here in San Clemente. The second is our, was our city's Memorial Day celebration, where I was honored to give the opening remarks to celebrate the remembrance of our lost military members. Uh, if you haven't had a chance to go to that event, please consider it in the future. It was an extraordinary memorial offering, uh, uh, our, our appreciation to the military that serve in our country. And we also, uh, do recognition of any veteran, uh, family member that has died in the line of service, or, uh, that, that is a veteran, and we will recognize them at next year's event. Uh, had a chance this week to do some inter, several interviews with LA television stations on our sand replenishment projects, and I did another interview on national TV with, uh, on the upcoming Grants Pass, uh, decision. And that's my report. Anybody else?
I'll second everything the mayor said. That was a great review of those. I forgot how busy it was, but that, there was a lot of
Everybody was at most of those events. Everybody was at most of those events.
A lot of, a lot of great events. I just want to add to it, at the, I was down at Marine Safety yesterday and kind of looking at what had happened after they pulled out, and the sand down north and south the pier is just phenomenal. I mean, anybody has a chance to go down there and take a look, it's, it's just crazy. You look at the before and after pictures, and you're looking south from the pier at the beach area, you'd think you were in Waikiki. There was umbrellas and people out. I mean, it's just phenomenal. So 20 years in the making, and I think everybody should be really optimistic about our, our sand program and how we're committed going forward to even maintaining it. So anyway, we're looking for a great summer. It was a, it was great to see the sand down there.
Anybody else?
Chris, you want to go?
Do, actually, do we have that list? Because I, I don't see the, the speaker's list on my.
Oh.
We have Councilmember Lefler, who spoke, Mayor Pro Tim Inmire.
Okay.
Councilmember Duncan, and Councilmember Novak.
All right. Well, let's go down now.
Yeah, sure. I just want to add, at that elected coastal real resiliency study, it was really encouraging to see Congressman Levin there, Katrina Foley there, Lori Davies there, a whole host of, of everyone getting involved bipartisan, saying, this is really important that we have sand on our beach, and that was emphasized by the council there, it was emphasized by our city staff. And then at the meeting the night before, although I wasn't in attendance, thank you to all of the community members who were there, also emphasizing that same message. Quick shout out for the graduation to my 20 international baccalaureate students who graduated wearing all red robes. It was really encouraging to see them after working with them for, for two years on that. Also, I had the opportunity to go to a meeting out in Palm Desert on human trafficking and the fentanyl crisis. It was really informative. If you have questions on that, I'd be happy to, to answer, but it's informative and scary and all of that combined, so I'll, I can say more of that. Siri just decided, just said yes.
Siri's up to it.
She agrees, yeah. Yes, and also, well done to the Human Affairs Committee to putting on the, the open house that, that was at the community center. Well done there, and also to our staff, putting on the, the budget symposium as well. Yes, that's all.
I would just say, having the opportunity to meet many of your students and a lot of the students at the graduation, it gives me hope.
Yes, they, they are fantastic students. They are wantland and so proud of every single one who made it across that stage and got their diploma, and they are going on to incredible opportunities in the future, so really proud of all of them.
Mr. Duncan, you're next.
I think you covered it, Victor. I'd like to say two things. One, you know, having attended the coastal resiliency meetings, it's just, it's just incredible what it shows about our city, right? This, that, they've changed policy by the community engagement. It's reminiscent of what, that, what folks in the community did in changing, changing the TCA's course of action on, on the toll road. That wasn't by us. That was all the community out here. And this is, this is very reminiscent of that, people coming in a very productive and professional way, making points, not insulting other people with opposing ideas, but really showing a galvanized, community unified effort to prevent rocks on our beach and to make sure that it's sand that's on our beach, all the way down through songs and all the way down into trestles and up to North Beach and beyond. So I, I just am really, really proud of our residents for coming together and showing what can happen when the community unifies together around something that, that we all believe in and value. So, so kudos to Bring Back Our Beaches and Save Our Beaches, the SOBs. The other, the only thing I think you missed, Victor, I don't know if you were there, but Los Molinos, who's, I guess, going to be doing our, our slip inside there, they had their two-year anniversary, and, and just another massive success story, right? A local business that gets together and completely rejuvenates an area, that, that little surf grotto down there, right? Like, and, and just what Roman and his team have done to really bring a lot of energy to the Los Molinos area, and, and I think by, by extension, North Beach, where we really want to have economic activity, is, is just something to really be proud of, too. And they, they've done a fantastic job, another great event for their two-year anniversary. And I hope we, I hope they provide an example for more activities like that. We, we have the Vegan Festival that's, that's in North Beach, the first Saturday, I think, of the month, and has been really nice and successful, and that's a cooperative effort with the North Beach Community Association. But I think we can do more, actually, to, to get, to help that, that event and get other events in North Beach that drive economic activity, that helps small businesses, and that, by extension, keep, keep, keep the area safe for families, right? Because folks don't want to be around in the light of day, right? Where there's economic activity and people coming. So I want to see, I'd like to see more of that, but I'm really proud of our city for all of those efforts over the last two weeks and, and everything leading up to that. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. You, you mentioned North Beach. I just want to mention, I had the chance to go meet with the, the new owner of Landers that, that.
Sylvester's?
Sylvester's now, that is going to open up maybe as soon as next week, so it, I know I got an, yeah, it's an Italian restaurant, but I, I got a, a message from community members that thought it might be closing down, abandoned, but there'll be a new restaurant there, Sylvester's, Italian restaurant. Steve?
Victor, I think you had a comprehensive list of the activities in our city.
We were all there.
I was really, I really regretted that I was not able to attend the beach ribbon cutting and a couple of others because of family members out of state that, most of that week, but I'm glad we were represented there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, then.
Next item on the agenda is oral communications. I will call the first three speakers up. Amanda Q., followed by Gary Hedrick, followed by Cameron Hook.
And if your name has been called, please come up to this front row so that you don't have to walk all the way up once you're called. All right. Amanda?
Great. Thank you so much. Next slide, please. It's wonderful that our city has a great partnership with OCTA, and that, and the OCTA has been our friends and allies throughout the years. From the beginning, I've said we need to work collaborat, I'm sorry, collaboratively with the OCT for solutions for sand replenishment, to secure the railroad, you know, and it seems like all our city, county, state, and federal representatives and major stakeholders like the, like Mr. Kettle, the MetroLink CEO, OCTA CEO, Mr. Darrell E. Johnson, are, are all in agreement that we need sand nourishment and investment or facade with that. And I, I just wanted to give a history regarding the background for the OCTA, because they've been with us in our town hall meetings in 2018, 2019, with OCTA representatives there, with Kia Marzavi, Darrell Lance Larson. Next slide, please. And here, we, they were at the toll, town hall meeting for Toll Road on October 24th, 2018. Next slide, please. And at that meeting, the OCTA Director of Planning and Development, Kia Marzavi, gave a presentation and regarding the, the amount of projects that they have done. Next slide, please. And also, what the city put out was a presentation, and also, there was an information regarding the myths and facts of the 241 Toll Road extension. And I think perhaps that should have been done with our city, because OCTA, there was this narrative that the OCTA didn't have sand nourishment or sand replenishment in their study. They did. And it was on page four, the initial assessment technical memorandum on page four, but there was no mechanism to implement that, and they had to get approval from OCTA board, which they did. Next slide, please. So here's another town hall meeting, we're regarding the Toll Road on November 13th, 2019, and you could see there was Senator Pat Bates, Assembly Member Bill Bro, and again, OCT representatives such as Lance Larson and Kurt Brodkey. Next slide, please. And Kurt Brodkey really was instrumental in doing a PowerPoint presentation regarding the projects and services the, that OCTA does. And so I think that's the end of my lands, my slide presentation, but just keep that up. But I wanted to say that they brought out concerns regarding the TCA's PSR, PDS, conflicts with the current and planned projects, and they went through each section of all the toll roads from Area B, C, D, and they really highlighted the conflicts with the TCA projects. And that's something that they didn't have to do. So I, you know, they already have been our partners, they've been our friends, and they have been our allies, and they've been working with our city and local and county representatives because this, and it's just, it's a shame that people thought that they were bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, yes.
Thank you.
Now, we have a good relationship with them, and we meet regularly with them.
Well, good evening, council. Mayor, my name's Gary Hedrick, representing San Clemente Green, but I just have to tell you how, how proud I am to hear this meeting tonight. I, I love San Clemente, and you guys remind me so many of the ways that we should appreciate it, and I realize I missed out on a lot of fun events, too. But, you know, it's a wonderful city to be in, and I'm, I'm here to talk about the San Onofre syndrome movie, and mainly because, well, it's a free week, again, thanks to the Sierra Club, they're offering it for free for anyone that wants to see it. But this really echoes what was said tonight about nonpartisan issues and stuff, because San Clemente Green is involved with environment, they probably assume, you know, it's a liberal issue, or it's a, you know, environmental focus, but it's not. When you see the movie, you'll understand, it's all about safety. We're in a condition and a situation that was unfortunate. I'm not trying to blame anyone, I'm just trying to find a solution to, how do we deal with nuclear waste that was stored in temporary canisters that was supposed to be picked up since 1998? What do we do when we run out of time? And that's what the movie's about, because it's not just San Onofre, it's, the syndrome is nationwide. We have this situation at 76 other locations. It's nonpartisan, it's purely safety, it's like the future of the planet, it's that big. And so I'm just, I wanted to point out that the movie keeps winning awards, and it's getting recognition in so many places, but I don't feel like it's getting enough here. And we're the ones really facing the problems, and we're the ones that are going to be expected to rally behind it, just like the sand issues, or toll roads, or some of the other nonpartisan things we've talked about tonight. So, you know, I'm anxious for the momentum to pick up, and it's a really good story. I think it's, you know, it involves my wife and I to some degree, but it's all the activists that helped make this problem become a focus of the public. And that would never have happened if this movie didn't exist, because all our meetings were kind of in a bubble, you know? We, we speak our mind, but nobody hears it. We're speaking to the CEP or the Edison, and so it's, it's a great opportunity to see what, what process we went through, understand what the problem really is, and start looking for answers. Because, you know, the sand replenishment and the rail corridor is very important, but there's a point in time we're heading towards where the way to move the nuclear waste out of here is going to be by rail. And, and the decades between now and when that's going to happen, we're going to have more and more erosion. So, you know, let's concentrate on the inland route or some other way to make sure we can move the waste when it's ready to go, and let's do it together. You know, this, there's the movie, there's, I had a little quick thing from Mike Levin, but there's no time for it. But there's, you know, you guys, I've talked to you, you support it in so many ways. I hope you spread the word. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing this movie, too. I, I should say, Mark and I are on a, on a committee that looks at this, you know, on a monthly basis, sometimes it's been more than that, and we have meeting, I have a meeting next week, and I don't know if Mark's going to be able to join, but with the new rail cars and the new testing of, of, of equipment and about how we move it out, it's mostly a federal issue, and all the money's there. The federal government has all the money, we just need a site, and we spend a lot of time looking for that site. But let me move on to the next speaker, and.
I'll call the next three speakers. Cameron Hook, followed by Scott McCann, followed by Mike Kay. Go ahead.
Hi there. My name's Cameron Hooly, and I'm a resident here in San Clemente, and I'm here on behalf of Happy Coffee Club. First, I want to say, after hearing Mr. Bar to speak about all these more important things, really puts life in perspective and makes my complaints seem really irrelevant. But, yeah, so I'm, I'm here on behalf of Happy Coffee Club. My wife and I, we're blessed enough to be able to buy a building downtown San Clemente on Avenue of Victoria, which was the old La Tendida building, and I've been going through the process with planning for the last six months, and it's really been quite a nightmare. And so I came here to try and get some support from you all. I know Chris spoke about Los Molinos going in and rejuvenating an area, and that's really what we want to do. I don't know if you guys have been to our building in the last year, but it's been vacant for five years, and there's a lot of homeless people that have been living behind it, breaking into it, and the only thing that's really holding us up is parking, which I've solved that issue, and I've done everything that planning has asked me to do over the last six months, and they just keep pushing it back to the next meeting. And so my hope is to maybe get some help from you all and get things moving forward and get everything opened up that we want to do.
All right. Thank you.
Are you, are you, hold on.
Can I ask the speaker one, just one quick question?
Yeah.
Where, are you at design and review? Where are you in the process?
What's holding us up is parking. So that building has a really narrow, like, basically alleyway and parking behind, and so I went over to AgeWell and talked to them about using their parking, because that parking lot's city-owned, and the director there has agreed to it. And then I've also talked to planning, and they said that they're okay with it, but they just have to do like a parking review.
Okay. I, I get where you're at. Thanks.
We, we can't take up your issue tonight, the city council really can't take it up, but I would suggest, you know, talking to our, our city manager, maybe set up an appointment, talking to him and seeing where he can go, or any one of us individually. Rick's, I think it's in your area, but you, you can call any, any, any one of us individually, probably better than, than at this public forum.
Sure. Okay.
All right. Thank you. It is an important issue, we're trying to do all we can for our businesses.
Of course. All right. Thank you for your time.
Scott McCann, followed by Mike Kay.
Good evening, Mayor and council, council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I just wanted you to know, so I've applied for reappointment on the Planning Commission, but I will not be in town when you guys are doing interviews in two weeks. So I just want to do comment, for those of you who don't know me, introduce myself, and so you could put a face with the name and the application. Regarding hearing all that you guys do on, you know, relative to all those events and stuff, thank you very much for your service. Better you than me. That's a lot of, a lot of service to the community. I love serving the community on the Planning Commission. I was noticing that on the council agenda, the mission statement for the city, maintaining a self-safe, healthy environment, safe, healthy atmosphere in which to live, work, and play, guiding development to ensure responsible growth while preserving and enhancing our village character, unique environment and natural amenities, providing the city's long-term stability through promotion of economic vitality and diversity. And really, you guys have already touched on all of these items, and you're not even really into the agenda yet. And the Planning Commission, you know, has a role in, in helping that out and making sure that things comply with the city codes, and how we can move forward, and how we can help them out. So brief little Planning Commission resume, I've been on the Planning Commission here in town for three years, I've served as Chair and Vice Chair, I was on Dana Point's Planning Commission for six years, also serving as Chair and Vice Chair. I'm a registered civil engineer, I love San Clemente, I love serving on the Planning Commission, so hopefully I'll have your support when you guys do tackle that issue next meeting, but I won't be here.
Thank you for, thank you for letting us know, and thank you for your service on that committee. I think maybe that's a little bit more hard, it's, it would be harder for me than, than what we do up here. So thank you very much for your service. Any other?
Mike Kay.
Mike Kay.
Mayor Cabral, City Council, I would like to speak briefly regarding the local hazard mitigation plan that will be renewed, hasn't been renewed since 2004. Some of you, two of you, been here long enough to remember, when I first started speaking about this, my insurance rates went through the roof, and for a time, I didn't think I'd get any insurance for fire insurance on my house at all. And I lived in a relatively safe area. In fact, I was outside of the very high fire zone that covers about a third or so, the southern part of our town. I would like to ask that staff consider emphasizing the need to confront I would like to ask that staff consider emphasizing the need to confront issues related with fire insurance for homeowners in our town when putting together that plan. That, that aspects of that plan look closely at the need to consider residents in the southern part of our town that are not getting insurance or their rates are going up. I was texted just today, actually, of a, a resident in the south whose insurance was dropped, homeowner. It's a serious concern, obviously, we've had a lot of rain, fuel loads are up, et cetera, et cetera. It's something that's dear and near to me, I've talked about it in the past numerous times, I won't go into it again. But it is a significant concern to folks on the south side, it's often overlooked and it's something that we really need to understand. Big picture, it'd be nice if we became a firewise city. Rancho Santa Margarita is certified as a, as a firesafe, firewise town. They're even more exposed than we are, but not a lot more. It's something I think we need to consider is rolling back the very high fire zone designation that Cal Fire has given one-third of our town. It, it goes all the way up to this building. I mean, it's a lot of our area. We can, we can, yes, we can bring in our goats, we've got a big fire break, we can put out a list of vegetation that is approved for homeowners to plant, firewise vegetation, those lists do exist, just like we do for the bluff top to prevent erosion. There are things, lots of things we can do. And I hope that this plan being put together would emphasize the desire on the southern side to mitigate this issue so that we have access to insurance and affordable insurance for all of our homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you, you make, bring up some great points. Any other speakers? None?
No additional speakers.
Can I have 30 seconds just to clarify? I never explained how to get the free movie.
I, I don't think we're allowed to, really.
Can you post that anywhere else?
Can you give it, we, we can post it on our website if you give it to our...
It's on, it's on here if you can read it.
Okay. We'll, we'll post it on our web...
SanClemente.com for free movies.
Okay, all right, we'll do that. Next item on the agenda, and it's, it's just because we'll get ourselves in trouble.
Next item is motion waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
There's a second?
Second.
You push your button.
Motion, aye.
No, okay, first, first and second.
The second was already blocked off.
All right, so...
That was a motion by council member, no block, second by council member Lefler.
So...
Go ahead and start voting, or we can do a...
We're doing it right, it popped up, okay.
Carrie's 5-0.
All right, next item.
Close session report, city attorney. Actually, pardon me. Consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action.
Do we have any? No, no item.
Close session report, city attorney.
Thank you. The city council met in closed session on item A1, there was direction given and no reportable action. They met in closed session on item B1, there was direction given, no reportable action. They met in closed session on item B2, there was direction given, no reportable action. And they met in closed session on item C1, there's direction given, no reportable action. Thank you.
All right.
Staff communications.
Mayor, just, just one communication. If people would like to watch that movie just, that was referred to, that movie would be on SantanofreSyndrome.com. And that's where you can get access to that movie and it's available until June 10th. Oh, you left. I believe it'll be available until June 10th.
Next item on the agenda, we're moving on to public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. And our first public hearing of the evening is public hearing to consider adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2024, '25 and fiscal year 25, '26. And we have a presentation by administrative services director Brower and finance manager...
You have to open the hearing. Let's, let's open the hearing and hear from our witnesses.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Brian Brower, administrative services director, here to present to you the proposed budget for the hearing and adoption. As you know, we've been at this for a few months, we, culminating in our budget workshop two weeks ago, when we presented the, the proposed budget. And then subsequently, we had our inaugural budget open house, inviting the public to come ask questions in a less formal setting and learn more about public services that we provide. And now tonight, we're here with our public hearing and anticipated adoption. I think I've missed a slide. Some key elements to the preparation of the budget. Our primary goal was to maintain current service levels and in some place, in some areas enhance them. We were focused on employee recruitment and retention. We're also focused on reviewing all department budgets line by line with staff and the city manager. Another item that I think is important to communicate is that we wanted to do a more effective job of communicating the budget itself. And so this year, we created a, a budget highlight document that's available in the back of the room, it's also available online, which is a 39-page summary of the 370-something page document that we've produced in the past. Of course, the full-length document is available online as well. To recap from our, our workshop a couple of weeks ago, our general fund, which is our primary operating fund of the city, has a positive operating position in each of the fiscal years that are being considered for this budget. The budget maintains existing service levels with a few enhancements that are based on council priorities that were identified previously in this year. And in addition, our emergency reserves are fully funded in the general fund. General fund operating revenues are stable. As you all know, we're very dependent on property tax in, in this city, being a bedroom community. We anticipate approximately 5% growth each year over the next two years for property tax, which is stable, steady growth. We also anticipate sales tax growth of about 2% per year. And our, our third largest revenue in the general fund, TOT, our transient occupancy tax, is anticipated to be relatively flat over the budget period. Regarding expenditures, some of the driving elements within the budget include personnel costs. The, the recent implementation of the classification and compensation study is, is implemented for both years of this budget and, and it's the first full year of those costs, and so that drives up personnel to a certain degree. We've also added a budget for an emergency services officer position within the budget and two park rangers to be added throughout the two-year period, one in each of the budget years. Contractual costs are also a driving force and we, in the budget, we address increasing costs for the OCSD and OCFA contracts, as well as some increases in our public works maintenance services contracts. Our capital improvement program is, is healthy and there's a number of items in the general fund that are, are funded, as well as the other funds. Some highlights from the general fund include our routine street maintenance and facilities maintenance. Also, there's funding for a replacement of the pedestrian audible warning system down in the rail corridor. Also, money for the SCOOP program, the local hazard mitigation program, as well as design funds for the Mariposa Bridge to determine some sort of solution there. Within our other funds outside the general fund, we, we have funding for the La Pata Vista Hermosa Meadows development, some playground equipment and parks throughout the city, synthetic turf replacement, reconstruction of the Marquita slope behind the Linda Lane pump station down on the bluff, a street project in Calif- on Califia, expansion of our recycled water program, a project to reclaim the water from the Pochi Beach runoff, as well as replacement of reservoir number 5A. Two weeks ago, in the, in the budget workshop and then also the days surrounding, we received a lot of citizen feedback about the proposed budget, as well as some direction from council. And we've taken that information and channeled that into some improvements so that people can better understand the budget and to make some clarifications throughout the document. One of those items is, and probably the most significant item, is the way we list our capital improvement projects. We received feedback from the public indicating that was confusing, seeing the six-year time horizon and, and whether or not those projects were actually funded. And so, we've, we've generated a new project listing that'll be incorporated into the adopted budget that only shows funding for the years that, for the projects that are truly funded in this two-year budget cycle. And then a separate listing for items that will be given consideration in the future, but we don't yet have a allocated funding or, or council has not yet prioritized those items. We also clarified the, the operating revenues and expenditures within the executive summary document, there was some confusion there. So we, we cleaned that up. We also decided to avoid confusion for the public, we've standardized on a multi-year format for identifying fiscal years. So throughout the document, when it's published, we will be indicating FY, you know, for example, FY 24, 2024 dash 2025 for the fiscal year encompassing those two years. We also made a correction on page 22 of, of the proposed budget, there was a typo there, 3 million versus 2 million. And then we also corrected on page 88, we found a pie chart that was pointed out to us that had an incorrect amount, and so that was bumped up from 23.1 million to 23.2 million. We're also adding some definitions within the glossary so that the pub, the public can better, better understand the document. We also received feedback from the council to further analyze the community group support that was included into the budget. The, the budget before you tonight includes the same funding that we had in the current fiscal year, or have in the current fiscal year. That includes $34,000 for the Downtown Business Association support, $7,500 for marine unit support, which actually ends up reimbursing the chamber for much of the cost for them putting on their, their annual picnic. And then an additional $2,000 that's utilized for advertising related to tourism and, and some costs associated with the chamber. We've also, in, in hearing the council's concerns in our, in our workshop, we've, we've begun to schedule meetings with these groups to better understand the, the budgets for their upcoming years and how they intend to spend these funds. I do want to clarify also that these are reimbursed funds. These are not grants that are just given out at the beginning of the fiscal year and they, they spend it however they want. These, these are reimbursements where they provide receipts for actual costs incurred. We also received direction to come back and further refine the, the creation of an emergency services position, and we intend to do that at a future council meeting, we'll bring back some options. We received similar direction with respect to the creation or the consideration of participating in a section 115 trust, trust for the funding of future pension contributions. We'll be bringing that back at a future meeting as well. With that, I'll hand off to the city manager.
Thank you. Mayor, council, we just wanted to, we talked a little bit about this at your last meeting and we just want to reiterate that we understand that the highest priority of the city council right now is to make sure that we take care of our coastline, that we find ways to put sand on the beach. In fact, at your next meeting, we have a special meeting to talk about an opportunity that has been bubbling out there, but I think it's been confirmed now and we're ready to go. Now, I will say that there was a correction made that, that the potential sand opportunities we have in this coming summer would be somewhere around 2 million. We're finding out that maybe that first number was right, it's going to be closer to 3 million. But we do know that sand is very, very expensive. And you can see here, we put together this chart for your consideration last time. We do believe that, that having vast expanses of beaches, beaches in our community are possible. We have seen the difference that it makes right near the pier between T Street and Linda Lane, some of the work that's happened so far this year. And we know that, that people want to see those kinds of beaches throughout our community and we do think it's possible. But it's not possible with the revenue stream that we have right now. We would need about an additional $10 million a year and you can see here why. And we've talked a little bit about that with the council. So, we want to make it really clear, we understand it's your priority, we don't have the funding available to do it at the level in which we, we would, would want to have so that we can end up with beaches like we see in the northern, with our northern neighbors, where they've got those wide, vast beaches in perhaps Huntington Beach or Newport Beach or even Laguna Beach. But they, they have to do the same thing, they've got to put money into their beaches, it's not, it's not inexpensive. We do believe that that could happen if the residents want to consider, and I know that there's a survey going on right now, we'll have those results and get that to the city council very soon. If the residents want to consider perhaps increasing the sales tax by one penny on the dollar, or 1% increase in, in our sales tax, that would be possible. That would generate a little bit more than $13 million for the city. So it's not out of reach, but it's something that our residents have to decide. This is their community, this is, this will be up to them. But we did want to point out that we, we clearly understand that that is the priority of the council. We will continue to, to do that and look for sand at every possible turn and make sure that we're doing that. I just wanted to, I wanted to reiterate that because we have a meeting coming up right after this where we're going to ask the city council for an appropriation of some funding to allow us to get some, some sand on the beach starting this month, starting in June. So I just wanted to kind of bring up that that is, there's not a lot of money in our current budget for sand and that's just a function of, it's, it's a new cost, we haven't done it in the past. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Is there another presentation or, no, that's it. Let me just say that...
Mayor Cabral, we do have a public comment.
Okay, one public comment.
Would you like to hear from the speaker, Amanda Quintanilla?
I have a slideshow presentation.
We're still in the, the hearing.
Yes. Next slide, please, thank you. So, just wanted, wanted to speak because there was a concern regarding the six-year amounts that were there and I think that was the only confusion as far as I'm concerned. At the last city council meeting, I pointed out that there was a discrepancy of $1.1 million and the city manager clarified that during a break that we had between closed session and the regular session. Next slide, please. And, so, if you add up all the, the, what's highlighted in yellow on the charts on the right, it adds up to 88.4 million, but it's not stated in the executive summary, this is a difference of $100,000. So if there is a, if something's rounded up, please, you know, put a little asterisk on that to kind of let the people know. Next slide, please. At the previous budget meeting, I addressed the concerns regarding the, actually, I, I addressed these concerns in an email to the city manager regarding what was, it was highlighted in yellow. And the current budget in that chart on the side on the right, and the boxes are in red, there were some changes to those numbers, so I appreciate that. But when looking at the narrative, that the amount, those amounts aren't included in there as far as, next, nice, next slide, please. And then again, and when adding the amounts, I presented this to Mr. Hall in a city, in an email. And if you look up all the, if you add up all the general fund expenditure, expenditures by category, and it adds up to 88.24 million versus, that's the chart on the left, and I used Microsoft Excel spreadsheet for that, and the right is what the city had used. Next slide, please, or you want to skip that one? Next slide. And so I previously addressed the last meeting, the narrative did not include the amounts in the general fund expenditures, which was 83.8 million and then I think 87.4 million. Next slide, please. I appreciate that there's new sections in here, it discusses the surplus revenue or the rollover balance and I really appreciate that Mr. Hall took that in, in consideration as well as our city staff with Jake and Brian, I appreciate that. Next slide, please. And again, here's a new section down below, emergency reserve. And it... new section down below, emergency reserve, and it outlines the fiscal years of 2023 to 2025 to 2026. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I'm glad, you know, I was correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this.
Oh, thank you. It's fun.
We do appreciate it. Back to what I was going to say is that, I mean, as a city council, we've been working on this budget for two months. I think each of us individually, we're still in the hearing, so I will close the hearing and then we'll-
Unless you have questions for staff.
Is there any questions for staff? Yes, I have a question for Andy.
Oh, good. Well, I just want, before, I don't want to answer your question before you ask it, but I do want to, again, acknowledge all of the input that we received from the council members and from the public. It made a big difference when you have a 300-page document that has moving numbers in it. I think we have scoured and scoured. We found less than a handful of mistakes. I just, I think everyone did a really good job really going through it, and I really appreciate that. Took a lot of time, so thank you, especially to the public and Amanda and others that really gave us some great input. So thank you.
All right. I don't have, what I was going to say is I don't think we have any questions since we've been working. I know everybody on this dais has worked on this and had hours of time to review and ask all the questions and meet with staff individually, department by department, and in the public, we've given all the opportunities. I don't know if anyone has any questions. We could, I mean, I know everybody up here has done their homework, and the people out there have done their homework, and I appreciate everything the staff has done in making yourselves available to the public in public forums and privately and so that we can get moving on this item. And I think it's a fine product. So if there's no further discussion, I'll close the public hearing. All right, the public hearing is closed. And does someone want to make a motion?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to-
Make a second.
Okay. To adopt resolution number 2478. Do I need to read it in full?
No, you do not.
Okay. And we have a second, so.
So we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Inmire, second by Councilmember Lefler, and go ahead and vote.
Mayor, I'd just like to say just excellent work by Andy and the whole team putting together a budget for the first time since I've been here that actually is sort of understandable and relatively easy to follow, and that really points out our priorities. So thank you to Andy, of course, but also Brian and Jake, who actually did all the work.
And it's the first two-year budget, by the way, too, so we don't have to go through this all next year. It's a two-year budget.
But I would, I think it's all the staff, too. I mean, this is not just, I mean, every department head, every staff member has to come up and get this done. And so the city staff really deserves all the, some of the recognition, too, department by department.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Did you have-
Just one question, Mark, on your motion. There are two, in addition to adopting the resolution, there are two additional staff recommendations to direct the city manager to prepare an agenda report addressing emergency services position with recommendations to best meet the service needs related to this position and direct the city manager to prepare an agenda report in conjunction with the city manager for consideration of participation in a Section 115 trust for the funding of future pension contributions. Did your motion include those recommendations as well?
Yes, my motion will include those.
And my second includes those also.
So you want to vote on that, too?
No, if it's included in the motion, then we have our vote, and it carries 5-0.
All right. Next item on the agenda.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution to approve a cooperative services agreement with the County of Orange for unmanned aviation systems, drone services to inspect open space areas for fire hazards and slope monitoring. And we have Community Development Director Atamian here to give a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Adam Atamian, Community Development Director. Before you is a resolution to approve a contract with the Orange County Public Works Drone Program Division. This is for a drone inspection services to do two things. One is to fly over open space areas that are both privately owned parcels and publicly owned parcels to identify potential fire hazard items and allow staff to then go on to these sites and remove those such items. And the second is to provide slope monitoring imagery, which is conducted through a comparison of topographical maps that are taken over time. This item was initially proposed by council, then Mayor Gene James with the support of council, three members of, two other members of council, excuse me, to direct staff to initiate this project. We've worked with the County of Orange since then to do a number of these inspections, these drone flights, review the imagery that they are able to provide, and organize a program in which we can facilitate this type of work. The contract is for three years, not to exceed $150,000, and $50,000 per year. So I will end my presentation with that, and I am available for any questions.
All right. Is there any questions?
Sure. So is this something that we've done before? Is this like a brand-new program?
So do we want to do the speakers?
Oh, do we have?
Okay, well, let's just ask the questions.
Yeah, is this something that we participated in before? Is this a new program that we're starting?
This is a new program. The city's marine safety division does have their own drone that they use for flying over the ocean to look for potential water issues or people struggling. But this type of inspection service is something that the city has not done in the past.
Do you know if any of our neighboring cities participate in this by any chance?
I know that this type of service provided by the Orange, the County of Orange, is not something that they have provided to or been asked to provide by other cities. And I do not, I am unaware of any other local jurisdictions that have this type of drone program in-house.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Inmire.
Yes, I was wondering, does OCFA have any opinion on this? Have you contacted them? Are they, do they have their own program? And then also, let's say, the drone finds an area, what would happen next?
Yes, so staff contacted multiple government agencies, including the Orange County Fire Authority and the Orange County Sheriff's Department, many of whom have drone programs, the OCFA does. However, the way that they use their drones are not for this type of inspection. They use it to do live monitoring of fire situations, other types of life safety incidents that are occurring at that time, not as a pre-inspection type of service. The way that this program would work is that the, due to the complexity of the areas that are being inspected, drones are, would fly in a pattern. They start with an area that is geolocated so that the drone knows exactly where it is at all times. And from that, we can, it helps to better identify where things in pictures are actually located. And so we take all of this imagery, we look at it, and we can actually pinpoint where those are and then send staff into those areas to remove potentially flammable materials.
When you say flammable materials, are we talking brush or are we talking other things?
This would be things like accumulated lumber, propane canisters, those types of items.
And is there concern now that there are propane canisters out in the brush? Or is there a concern that there is excess lumber in these inaccessible areas at this point?
At this point, well, I'll put it this way. At the time that this project was initially conceived, there was a, I think, a, more of a perception that those items existed. Since that time, staff has done a number of things related to these types of open space areas to ensure that there is not this type of accumulated material as it may have existed in the past.
So we're doing a good job already of maintaining these areas and keeping a good fire prevention system going.
Yes. You know, in a sense, we do inspect these areas on foot pretty regularly. The additional capabilities of the drones is a nice addition, but, you know, as far as staff is concerned, in the last two years, I can tell you that we feel that we have a very good handle on the issues in the open space areas.
Thank you.
All right. I have a couple of questions. I have concerns about privacy and flying over privately owned property and even publicly owned private property where people aren't aware that you're filming them. Can you talk more about those concerns? Do we have the right as a city to do that, fly over housing, flying over canyons that's privately owned and over neighborhoods?
Yes. So our municipal code does include a section on unmanned aviation systems or drones. The requirements of that would pertain to the city as well, and that is that if you fly over private property, you have to have the written permission of the property owners on hand when you fly. One of the reasons that staff supported a contract with a government agency is because they fly over a lot of property where there could be privacy concerns, and their pilots are trained to not take video of sensitive areas. With that said, the city's municipal code does identify a number of areas that are no-fly zones, and a lot of them are actually the city's beach restrooms because they have an opening to the sky. And so drones are not allowed to fly within 500 feet of those types of areas. So we do have existing regulations on, that help control privacy issues, but the contract is designed to be serviced by an entity that has experience in not affecting people's privacy during these types of flights.
And for me, I mean, it seems like the cost is prohibitively expensive. And do we know how it compares with other drone programs or other means that we have to monitor these areas that could serve the same purpose?
One of the fundamental problems with the cost of this type of service is that it's not, it's really not possible for staff, for somebody to get a drone and fly it over the air, over these areas, and easily identify where things are as they're flying it. So there's this coordination between identifying where something's located, which is often hidden in brush, and telling somebody else where that is and directing them to that. And I'll give an example. When marine safety is flying their drone, there's, one, they're dealing with, I'll call it a level playing field. It's water. They're looking for something that's not blue. When there is an issue, they have people with jet skis that can get there in a matter of minutes. When we're flying over open space, it can take half an hour to hike somewhere to find something. And so the amount of time that it would take to do this with a much cheaper drone system would cost an exorbitant amount in the staff time necessary to coordinate this type of effort. The county's drones are very expensive. The amount of battery time alone that it takes to fly these and to just do these organized flight patterns take, they brought about $80,000 worth of batteries just to fly for about four hours. So to do that on a regular basis would require staff to purchase a lot of equipment that would exceed the cost of a three-year contract.
All right. The other thing, and I know since I didn't give you enough time to investigate it, is I've met with the County of Orange in meetings with a separate department that there's a geo, that does satellite imagery of our entire county, and they have a whole staff of people that do that. And they've told me that they've made this avail, or will, could make us available to us. It's not drone, but it is satellite imagery, which we know can get down to the detail. So I have a concern about us putting one in front of the other unless we fully explore that. But I don't expect an answer from you because I just brought that to your attention today. And I don't see any other speakers, so let's hear from the public.
Mike Kay.
Mayor, City Councilman. I was actually going to speak to this earlier, and I simply walked away and forgot, which is why I used public comment. I was trying to merge two things. But I do want to speak to this. I actually have had a drone come over my property in Sonoma County, and it evolved into a, almost a confrontation between me and the county. It was invasive. It was offensive. It was, it was a use, it was a manipulation by a neighbor that I wasn't getting along well with, a large golf course up there. After the fires, I was up there. I had some of my workers with their RVs staying on my land. It was confrontational. In the end, I moved the RVs, but I was accused of running a trailer park on my land, which was ridiculous. It was a matter of weeks. The drones went up. I got a picture in the mail showing the photos of my land, and the RVs were long gone, hadn't broken any rules. But I was accused of running a construction yard because I saw, they saw some bricks, retaining bricks. You'll see them at landscaping places, everything. They make quick walls out of them so that you can retain pea gravel and things. And I had a chance to buy them after the fire, and I was going to use them for gardening in the future. I had 24 of them, maybe an area about this size, right, on 26 acres. They were completely charred and on fire. I was ordered to take these out because I was using my land as a storage yard for construction. Ridiculous, just ridiculous. So drones, look, I'm all about preventing a fire. I love the idea that we're going to have aerial surveillance to watch for propane canisters or homeless camps or all kinds of things. But it's a slippery slope, and we got to be a little careful with the drones where it goes, because it can be used. Neighbors can manipulate these things, and it can lead to antagonism and mistrust between landowners and government, which is what we don't want. In the end, it might be more expensive to have people walk around, but in the end, we will have citizens who will respond and be respectful, won't try to hide things. It won't come up with conspiracy theories that crazy drones are flying over and goodness knows what they're doing. I'd prefer some goats and no drones. Anyway, I wanted to offer perspective of someone who's actually seen the negative side of having drones fly over them. And, oh, and those drones were not allowed to fly over our land, as pointed out. These pictures were taken from a road which distorted the angle, which only aided in the potentially misunderstanding of what was going on on my land. So it can be problematic. Anyway, thanks.
For your comments. Any other speakers?
No more speakers.
All right. Hearing those speakers, is there-
Comments?
Comments or a motion?
Just under discussion. I, I'm not in favor of the program. I think the privacy issues are real. I think we have other priorities. I don't think it's needed, actually. So at the proper time, I'll make a motion that we table this item when it's appropriate.
Yeah, or you want to go?
Go ahead, Chris.
Well, yeah, okay. Well, just a little bit of-
Well, just a little bit of context, because I think I was there for the vote. At the time, as Adam mentioned, we actually did have some concerns. There was a large encampment just across our border, at kind of the trail leading down to Tressles, and there were people there that did have equipment to start fires. And so I think we were facing the idea that we had sensitive areas that were susceptible to people starting fires, and that was what kind of prompted us to do it. I think we've come a long way from there. We've got, I think, certainly a robust system in place in our community development department dealing with homeless people and dealing with people that may be encamped in our ravines. And so I don't think we have the need for this anymore. And I think it's interesting that we have this after our budget presentation, where I think we want to be very conscientious about how we spend our money. So I think I'm echoing some of the other concerns here, and I will not be supporting spending the money on this at this time.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, there would have been more of a benefit with the encampments, like Chris said. And everything Adam said is 100% correct on the benefit of what this technology can do. I think, Adam, by doing such a great job, you've kind of negated a lot of the reason to have this because code has cleared up the encampments. I would also feel much better if this was like a one-year trial, so we could see what the benefit with the slope movement and all these. But to tie in three years with not even knowing the benefit, I think at this time, I would be in favor of tabling it also.
All right, Mark?
I would just echo what my council, fellow council members are saying. I'd also say that with the development of our park ranger program, I think they are going to have a great opportunity to be hiking through those trails to find those things and having eyes on those situations much better than I think a drone would. So, yeah, with that, I would echo the other council members, and has it been seconded yet?
Well, let me speak to it first. I would only say that it hasn't been said yet, is that one, we need to explore. The programs at the Orange County, or the data that they already have, I think they have a robust amount of data that's already available. The concern for me is the use of that data on our bluffs so we can monitor. We haven't talked about that much, but monitoring and measuring what's happening with our bluffs and our ocean, I think is critical. I think that data may be available, but I'll work with you and see if I can find the context that I had, that I, people that I've met with on that. But I also believe that there's better ways to spend that significant amount of money until we've done our due diligence on that. And I also have the concerns with the surveillance over private property, which is of concern. So it may be, maybe for the bluffs, I would consider it with limited use, but we will bring that up at a later time. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we table Resolution 2479 and the three related items.
I will second.
All right.
Okay, that was a motion by Councilmember Noblock, second by Mayor Protim Enmeyer, carries 5-0, to table this item. And the next item on the agenda is request for allocation of funding for beach nourishment at North Beach. City Manager Hall.
Mayor and Council, moving into our special meeting section of the agenda, I just wanted to talk to you about an opportunity that you've heard about for the last several weeks, probably maybe a couple of months, where Orange County Parks has identified some sand that may be available to our community of about 30,000 cubic yards that could be placed at North Beach. That has become a reality, and I think that that is fantastic, and I think that that's going to be something that's great for our community. They're talking about placement beginning as early as this month, sometime later in June. That placement would last for about 70 days. That work would be probably around 40 trucks per day. It would be Monday through Thursday. The Coastal Commission would not allow us to do it on the weekends. All of that sand would be placed above the mean high tideline because this is a waiver, and we don't have time, in order to accept this sand, we don't have time to get a permit from state lands to do anything below the mean high tideline. We have surveyed, and we do know that we can place that sand and that North Beach is large enough to accept it. So that's great, and we're really excited about that. As you know, the sand is free. However, getting it here and spreading it on our beach is not. And we anticipate, we've got an estimate that that's going to cost right around $42 per yard. Now, that's a relatively good price when you're talking about hauling and spreading the sand, but at 30,000 cubic yards, of course, that's 1.38 million. And so we would need to identify the funding for that. So there's a couple of things that staff has requested by City Council. First would be an allocation from our sand account. Right now, we have about $800,000 remaining in that sand account, so that would take care of a big portion of that cost. The other would be that we would request that we would suspend the next phase of our SCOOP permit for the next two years, and that will free up a little over $500,000, and that would get us to the mark that we need to be able to place sand on the beach. The reason for that is that right now, because of what's happening both with OCTA and the city, the Coastal Commission recognizes that we need to get sand on our beach as quickly as possible, and they're willing to consider waivers, or essentially, we don't have to get permission or go through the environmental issues to be able to place some of the sand on our beach. We, in fact, are on the Coastal Commission agenda for this Friday. This item would be on their consent agenda, we see no reason why it wouldn't pass. We've received letters of support from both Senator Wynn, Assemblymember Davies, OCTA, so everyone is in favor of this. Now, I did want to point out that although we are responsible for payment of this right up front, and we don't want to miss this opportunity, even though, even though it's challenging, it's very difficult for our community, sand is very expensive, but it is so important to our community, we don't want to miss out on it. We do, we have been working with OCTA, and it's been said many times tonight, they have been a great partner, especially in trying to bring sand to our beach. One of the things we are asking from the Coastal Commission is that as part of the mitigation for doing the Cypress Shores project, that the Coastal Commission could help us pay for this amount of sand. They recognize how tight our budget is, they know that for a small community like ours, that is a real burden, and they have mitigation obligations anyway. So we're hopeful that that will work out, we're going to continue to work in that respect. However, we also have some additional sand that we believe is going to be available to us this fall. That would be 40,000 cubic yards, or between 40 and 45,000 cubic yards, that would be coming from Huntington State Beach, that they would like to put on Calafia Beach. So we're hopeful, again, in working with OCTA to have them make that part of their mitigation obligations. If not, I don't know which rock we're going to look under, we're going to keep doing it, and these guys keep pulling rabbits out of the hat, and we're going to keep doing it because we just, we know how important it is to the community, we know how important it is to the council. But we do have a request, I know it's kind of a last, it's not really a last-minute thing. We've been talking about it, but now it's for real, and now that the sand is available, we want to take advantage of that. We wanted to come to the City Council tonight, see if we could request an allocation from the City Council of 1.38 million to be able to put 30,000 cubic yards of sand on the beach at North Beach above the high tideline.
Thank you for that report. I would only add a couple of other things. First, do we have any comments?
We have one comment. Amanda Q.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, that was fantastic, great news, OCTA helping out. I was just going to ask regarding the, you had mentioned the Coastal Commission about getting a waiver, isn't that this Friday or June 14th at Moro Bay? Because I just wanted to.
The 14th.
Right, the 14th, right, correct. So I just wanted to.
My Fridays get.
They all seem to roll into one.
I'm always thinking two weeks ahead to the next council meeting, so I'm always ahead of myself.
Exactly, no, I just wanted to make sure I am really supportive of this, and it's really great that we're doing that. But I just have a concern regarding if we're going to, you know, do this, offset the cost of using the $800,000 for sand for this project, for 30,000 cubic yards of sand, but is going to delay the SCOOP permitting process for the next two years? So that's a concern, though, because if we have storms or whatnot, there's a concern regarding, you know, getting behind the SCOOP permit, because the city's already gotten behind with the SCOOP permit. I think, you know, we had to, to sand replenishment at North Beach, and unfortunately, they were during the winter, and now, doing it now is really important, and we have to do this. But I'm just concerned about the SCOOP permitting and putting that, kicking that can down the road. So that's all I have to say, but thank you so much, I really appreciate all the work from Mr. Hall and other representatives and OCTA, and they are fantastic. Thank you so much, thanks.
Thank you. I'll start, I mean, we've had this debate about, you know, whether we delay the SCOOP permit, whether it's a good idea, but the way I've looked at it is, we have a SCOOP permit that allows us to get sand once we get the SCOOP permit, and we spend that money, a significant amount of money on that SCOOP permit, and then we don't have money afterwards to get the sand. So use that money right now, in my view, is a better option, use that money right now, delay the SCOOP permit, get the sand right now on an emergency basis, it'll be on our beach in the next few weeks if everything goes right. The sands coming, I don't think you mentioned, from the Santa Ana River. We have the U.S. Coastal CDP waiver scheduled for June 14th. I don't know how many of us are going to go, but we were trying, we're going to have a presence here, we've written letters at least, and made phone calls expressing our support for them to get this done and to allow for remediation money to be used, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer Regional General Permit 63. Compliance is also in process, I think this has to be part of it. The Metro Row Approachment Permit is also in process, which is another permitting requirement. This would actually be one of the largest SCOOP permits projects to date in our city, and it's quite significant, it would be going to North Beach. We, as Andy mentioned, it'd take about 75 days to place 30,000 cubic yards of sand on the beach. I think it's the right start. We obviously are still working with all the agencies, the California Coastal Commission, OCTA, getting them to approve the use of OCTA funds for remediation, to pay for all these projects. That's, I wrote a letter on that last week that we sent to the Coastal Commission. We've secured letters from a lot of our colleagues in the Senate and the House, and even local elected officials to get on board with this. I think they're all on board, even a lot of our public advocacy agencies in San Clemente, and my colleagues here, of course, on the dais. Everybody, I think, is in favor of getting more sand on the beach, I think it's a great project. And so at the appropriate time, one of us will make the motion, but I just want to get a better idea how that motion has to be phrased. We had to approve the SCOOP permit delay, and what else? Is there?
And an allocation of the funding from the sand account. So there's two pieces of this, $800,000 from remaining in the sand account, and then the funding by suspending the SCOOP permit, SCOOP program.
We're not ready for that motion, I'll let one of my colleagues at the appropriate time make it, but.
Yeah, my question is, I think clearly we all delight and smile at the idea of getting sand on North Beach, especially North Beach, one of the worst beaches in our city. So I'm in favor of the concept. I'm a little concerned about holding off on the SCOOP permit. And the rationale is, we're spending quite a bit of money on getting that SCOOP permit, and we could use that money for the sand. The question then would be, do we have other sources to get that money so that we don't slow down the SCOOP permit? And I think the environment's changed, I mean, we weren't getting emergency waivers at all in the past, and now the Coastal Commission, perhaps because their existence is in jeopardy by the state legislature, they're now becoming very citizen-friendly and saying, maybe we'll give these waivers and do what you can. Whatever the rationale, we need the sand, I am very concerned about holding off on the SCOOP permit. If the environment changes, we're going to need that SCOOP permit, when we need it, we're going to need it big. I think there are other sources of the revenue, we've got, for example, 3.4 million in rollover funds from last year that weren't spent, there's a source of revenue right there. So I'd like to go forward and support the first concept, but the second part, dealing with the resources, I'd like to have the city consider another source.
Okay. You want to speak to that money?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, just to address that, the big issue was, we just kind of confirmed this last night. So we wanted to bring something to the City Council. I think it makes a lot of sense, first, we're adopting a two-year budget, and so within that two years, I think Councilman Noblock is correct, we always have fund balance at the end of every year. I think that we can make sure that the, any fund balance that we have either this year, we'll know, we're getting close to the end of June this year, right? So any fund balance we have at the end of this year or next year should go, that should be the first priority, is to get that SCOOP program going. I'm very confident, by the way, of two things. One, that we will have fund balance to restore that SCOOP permit, because I think that that's really important to the community as well. But two, I'm confident that we will be able to work out an arrangement with the Coastal Commission so that OCTA can do this as part of their mitigation, and they would prefer it. OCTA wants the sand to stay here, they want it to be in San Clemente, they don't want the money to just go into some kind of a sandbank and go somewhere else. They are very much in favor of this, I've had this discussion with them, they're very much in favor of it. I called a Coastal Commission colleague who's a member of the Commission last night, she indicated that the Commission would be likely very favorable to this kind of a situation as well. So I'm confident in those things, but we needed to have a decision for tonight so that we can pull the trigger literally tomorrow on an RFP so that we can get this going. So that's kind of, so we went to the most sand-related sources of funding that we had so that there was some connectivity to what we're doing here, sand and SCOOP. But I can't agree more that we need to quickly find ways to replenish that fund so that we can get the SCOOP permit going.
Steve, and I would just add to that, this didn't come up till last night, it was put on, as you know, as an emergency item. I think our best bet is to try and get the OCTA to replace those funds, and we're going to do everything we've heard, I've heard from the City Council, I'm going to do everything we can to make that happen, and I agree with our city manager, I think they will do it, and we'll keep the pressure on in that regard.
That's important, I just don't want to put the brakes. I agree completely, and I'm optimistic that that'll happen. I just don't want to put the formal brakes on the SCOOP permit, we have resources to get this done, we ought to do that, and keep our priority on sand, and SCOOP is an essential element to that sand protocol and strategy.
Absolutely, Rick?
Yeah, and I agree with Steve's concern, I also believe in a bird in the hand, you know, we've got the possibility of getting the sand now, and I do believe that our city manager somehow is going to figure out a way to, I won't say a stop on the SCOOP permit, maybe it's just a hold, a pause, and I believe he'll figure out a way to put that back into motion. One thing, though, and I just trust the city manager to do this, when you're talking about taking sand out of the Santa Ana River, I know Capo Beach had a little bit of an issue, the first sand they were going to get wasn't quite the quality, because it's not like the lovely sand we're dredging, it's different, and it has to be processed. And I just trust that you'll make sure that that sand is at least of a quality that's acceptable to be dropped at North Beach. And then I also think what we're missing a component on here is, we only move sand twice a year, that's what we contract for, that's not enough, you know, we have high tides, we have different weather, and at some point, we need to figure out a way to where we can kind of burm up sand as we need it. Huntington Beach does that, it's not a twice-a-year thing, it's an all-year thing. And even if that's figuring out a way, military surplus or something to get a bulldozer or something, so we can continually do it, so we can keep every possible ounce of sand that we get, we can maintain it here. So that's just another component maybe we ought to look at. But I'm going to be in favor, certainly, of grabbing the sand for North Beach.
Mark?
Great point on the bird in the hand is better than two in the field, and this is exactly what that is, we have this opportunity, we need to seize upon it. I do have one concern, though, that hasn't been mentioned yet, and that is the extra cost that was incurred with our current Army Corps of Engineers. cost that was incurred with our current Army Corps of Engineers coming in. And how, if the city needs to pay that extra cost, which I'm assuming, we can't assume that we're not going to be paying it, where will those funds come from? Because that's, those funds are going to be due shortly, and if we're already depleting our $800,000 reserve and we're finding this extra money, how are we going to pay for that extra sand from the Army Corps?
Well, two things. One, again, I'm pretty confident that part of the reason that this project was separated in two was to try and help us avoid that extra cost, and I hope that that's the way that it turns out. Second, if the worst-case scenario comes forward and we have to pay that, at least in the short run, they have given us the ability to pay that over a 10-year period. So instead of 2.6 million, it would be 280,000 with, because I think there's a low interest rate on there, but there is some interest rate on there. So even if we had to pay that for a year until we could identify funding, or as Councilman Noblock said, have a year where we get some fund balance built up, we could survive that. Again, what we're doing is not sustainable. I understand that completely. I'm going to try to get as much sand on our beach as we can. Our residents would decide whether or not we want to keep doing this, but I'm going to get as much sand on our beach as I can until I don't have any more rocks to turn over. It is so important to this community, and council's made it a priority. The other night, we had a hearing, OCTA had a hearing. Now, think about this. OCTA had a hearing on coastal rail resiliency. How exciting does that sound? This room was packed. You had to wedge people into this room. This community understands that the coast is so important to this community that that's every waking moment, that's what we do, is try to take care of our coast, and we're going to keep doing it until we run out of resources, and I think it's really, really important to the community.
I'll say this. Andy, you have done a phenomenal job of pulling rabbits out of hats to make this happen.
See.
And I believe, and our city is, our community is behind you, and council's behind you in going for this, and I'll just say to the community, eventually, unless the community stands up and puts something forward here, we're going to run out of rabbits. So we, this is a call to everyone else, like, be ready for that coming forward. We need to find these other sources so that we can have more opportunities to get more sand, not just for this year, but every year for the next decade, next two decades, and that direction is going to come from our citizens, whether they want that or not.
All right. Does someone want to make the motion?
I have a question, a question for the city manager. There've been a lot of animal analogies with birds and rabbits. My question is, will this go away? Will this project, will this bird fly away if we don't approve the killing of the scoop permit this evening?
No. If the city council wants to give direction that the staff go back and we identify funding from somewhere other than the scoop permit, we will. So what I will never do is spend money that we don't have yet. So what we would have to do is suspend some other project. We have, for instance, the pause program we talked about. We're limping along on pause, but the pause, we have $2 million set aside for pause. So we may have to put a pause on pause.
Put a pause on another project.
But that, that program also is running, that system is running on baling wire and duct tape a little bit. So, but if that is the direction of the council, trust me, we will go back and we'll identify some different funding if that would make you comfortable. Otherwise, we understand, it's been made perfectly clear by you and others, find a way to get that scoop permit funded again. The first opportunities we get for that, that's the priority.
Yes, and my question would be, follow-up on that. Are you confident that there's funds available to handle this within the existing budget without waiting a few weeks for the rollover funds?
I believe so. That's why I wanted to do it now. Yes, so, yes. To answer your question, yes, I believe we can find the money.
Then I would just encourage my colleagues, let's move forward with all haste, but to put a pause on the scoop project, we don't know how long that pause will be really, and are we sending a message that one of the active programs that we have right now, we're kind of pausing that when we could accomplish everything we want to accomplish without pausing it? That's...
You know, one thing to that point, it may be a little bit more, gosh, you guys are going to make me work. It may be a little bit more complex of a suggestion that, and I'll write that in a memo to the council, it may be taking a little bit from several places, whereas putting a pause on scoop made it very easy to understand. We're going to take the sand money we have and the money we have for our sand permit. We're going to use that. So it may be, it may be a little bit more complex, but I think we can go through and find it.
And when we're talking about a pause on the scoop permit application, how long of a pause are we talking there?
Probably been two years. The way, if things didn't work out otherwise and we didn't get any help from OCTA, and if we didn't have any fund balance rollover, it would be, it would be paused for a two-year period.
Yeah. I would only say, I'm pretty confident that it won't be two years. I think we're going to get the money, just based on numerous conversations, meetings. And so I think we will get the meeting. So I'm going to make a motion that we pause the scoop permit, delay it, and reengage as soon as we have money to substitute in for the sand, that we allocate the money from the sand fund. Is that, is that right? And from the fund balance also?
From the sand fund, which, from the sand fund and from the suspension of the scoop, I think, is what your motion is intending.
All right. City clerk, is that close enough?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to make that motion if there's a second.
I can ask a question regarding the motion. You mentioned there was a potential two-year delay in the scoop program. What would cause a two-year delay if we paused this for, let's say, a month, and within 30 days, you've identified funds to revive the scoop? What's the two-year?
Nothing. Yeah, I understand your point. So as soon as we would identify funding for scoop, we would replace it and we would keep going. I would hope that there wouldn't be a delay. Again, I can't spend money I don't have yet. So I've got to identify funding for this. Now, the scoop, remember that it was, there were two more phases of it, and one phase of that was going to be about 250,000, and the other was going to be probably 200,000. So there's two phases remaining. We, you've already funded the first phase. There were three phases of the scoop project, and we've done the first phase, and there's two remaining. It allows us to identify the funding tonight and for the city council to take a legal action to allocate money you actually have. Now, what you would want me to do is go back into this budget, perhaps, and what I'm hearing is, and identify, are there other places where we might be able to shift some projects around or delay those projects so that we can keep moving on scoop? That project's been, that's been made absolutely clear to me. I understand that's a priority of the council. I'm just trying to make sure I identify money between yesterday and today so that we can move on the sand.
That's understandable. I guess my question then would be, would you be open to a friendly amendment to, on a, every two-week basis, every time we meet, that the city manager report on funding available to fill in the second half of that funding so that the scoop isn't delayed?
Talk about a monthly.
Well, a monthly, okay. Monthly's fine. I mean, as soon as, at every regular meeting, maybe, but...
Yeah. I'd be, I'd be, we'll do that.
With understanding the motion and with the, I appreciate the worst-case scenario on the two years. I just really feel we're going to, we're going to beat that, and I'm going to...
I'm always a pessimist.
And I'm going to second the mayor's motion with a friendly amendment.
Yeah. I can support that.
Let's take the vote. All right. Thank you very much. Next item.
Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Is there any speakers?
Comments?
Public comments?
I'm moved. Is that counted?
Second?
All right. Been moved and seconded. Thank you, Chris.
That carries 5-0.
Item.
Just getting there on my agenda, sorry. Next item is Oral Communications Part II. I do not have any speakers.
Let's move the future agenda items.
Future agenda items.
I might have one. Looking at the...
Oral communications or future agenda items?
Oh, future agenda.
Okay.
Right, there's no, there's no oral communications, too? Yeah. Reviewing the, we have upcoming appointments and committees and commissions. I know the last couple of years, it's been really difficult in that we're overwhelmed with the number of people that put in for them. I know years past, it was hard to find people, but gee, even in the Public Safety Committee, we've got more than one person putting in for one spot, and Human Affairs, all that. So it's hard to get a turnover. People just seem to love working in these committees and commissions so much, they're not leaving, and I'd just like to see if we could look at a possible term limit on some of these committees and commissions so we could get a little bit of a turnover in them, and I don't know what that would look like.
Are you looking for that review before the next series of appointments?
Well, that might, that might be too soon. I'll, you know, I don't want to pressure staff. The 18th, we got in two weeks, we have that. I'm not sure if that's realistic.
We won't be back.
And we won't be back. So probably not realistic, so we'll have to suffer through this next one, but then maybe by the following, you know, when we move forward, maybe we could have a plan in place.
I can second that, yeah.
And we need a staff report out?
We'll probably do.
Give a third, yeah.
Okay.
But there's no, you're not...
Oh, no, there's no expediting this. I just think, I just mean looking, looking forward. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Any other future agenda items? Hearing none. Reports, commissions, and committees? We've sort of gone over some of that. Council subcommittees?
Sorry, on commissions and committees, just a report from the Coastal Animal Service, CASA. They are moving forward with some position changings and trying to make things more service-friendly, and we are moving from a part-time position of one of the supervisors to a full-time position. And also, there is the dog reading summer program, both for children and for older adults. So if anyone would like to have some fun reading to the dogs over the summer...
It's like you said, dog breeding.
No, 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 no. Dog reading. You get to read to the dogs, yes. Get your mind out of the gutter.
Teaching them how to read?
You read, and it's a fun time, a fun time for everyone. Yes, yes. So that is open to the public.
Thank you, Mark. City attorney?
Thank you. I just want to report, it's a pleasure to serve the city of San Clemente.
It's just a pleasure having you as our city attorney. City manager?
That's so gross. Okay. We have one approved contract. Trussell's Technology Incorporated providing for membrane filtration for reverse osmosis project evaluation in the amount of $9,950.
Dave? Can you come answer your question real quick?
I'm just curious the location where it's going to be.
Your mic's off. Dave, don't make this too long.
Mayor members of the council, David Resort Public Works Director. What was the question? Where is it, where they're located, or?
Is this membrane going to be used, what, by Trussell's? I thought I heard Trussell's.
Yeah, no, Trussell is the name of the company. This is for the microfiltration reverse osmosis at the water reclamation plant.
Oh, okay.
For the recycle water system.
Okay, that's all. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
All right. So not Trussell's?
No, not Trussell's.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is that it, city manager?
Yes.
How is it working for the city council? All right. You don't have to, you don't have to comment on that. Someone want to move to adjourn?
Yes, I will make a motion to adjourn to the next regular city council meeting to be held on June 18th, 2024 at 1:00 p.m. for the purpose of conducting city commission and committee interviews. Closed session will begin at 5:00 p.m. The regular business meeting will begin at 6:00 p.m. It will take place in the council chambers, located at 9:10. Kaya Nogio.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.[1740.21]